Good evening. This is a meeting of the Township Committee, October 16th, 2023. The notice requirements provided for in the Open Public Meetings Act have been satisfied. Notice of this meeting was properly given by transmission to the Esberry Park Press, the Middletown Sun, the Two River Times, and by posting at the Middletown Township Municipal Building and following with the Township Clerk on January 5th, 2023. Miniman Clark.
Here.
Committeewoman Kratz.
Here.
Miniman Settebrino.
Here.
Deputy Mayor Hybel.
Here.
Mayor Perry.
Here.
Please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it's sent. Thank you.
That was the past.
I don't know, but I love that.
Okay. At this time, I'd like to ask for a moment of silence to honor the troops serving worldwide defending our constitutions, freedoms, and way of life. Thank you.
Heidi, before we move on, I'd just like to ask everybody, if everyone could just rise for one second. Last week, we witnessed terrorists invade a peaceful country and unfortunately caused chaos and harm to the people of Israel, in which 1,200 people have lost their lives over this incredibly sickening incident and what has now turned out to be a war. So if we could all just, for a moment, take a second and reflect and pray for the people of Israel. Thank you.
Thank you. Our first item on tonight's agenda, we have a presentation recognizing M.S... Oh, I'm sorry. Is that the first one we're doing? Monmouth County Board of County Commissioners Director Thomas Arnone and Monmouth County Clerk Christine Hanlon announcing the Monmouth 250 presentation.
Director, Madam Clerk. Know we have a PowerPoint presentation.
So, first of all, I want to thank the eleven and ten to zero here, and that's pretty much doing all the words here for a very special day. But before I start, I want to look at the young ladies here that are obvious you're here for a reason. And it has to be a good one. And when I first walked in, I said to our county clerk, I said, "I bet that they're around eight years old, U8." And the reason I knew that is because I started coaching a team your age when they were U8 that went all the way to U19. And we were all over the state, and I watched and I saw. And it just like brought back so many memories. So congratulations. I'm sure you're here for a great reason. So we, and I'm gonna let Christine dive into why we're really here today. It's gonna be a very special time. And in our county and in our state and our country coming up. And I can only reflect back to 1776, not 1770.
Oh, boy.
1776, going back there where my father was in the first aid there. And part of the duties that the mayor had for all the emergency services was the bicentennial back then. And in putting all the plans together and thinking back now, many years later, that now we're part of this. And it's been that many more years later. So this is gonna be a very exciting time. I know there's many other counties that are gonna be doing things all around their county, but we are gonna do a little bit more engagement, which we'll talk about a little later, with our municipalities and have a pretty much broad span. And I'm gonna let Christine kick off on what some of our initiatives.
Thank you, Commissioner Director Arnone. Thank you so much, the governing body, for having us. Thank you to all of you here for listening tonight. We're talking today about our county initiative to celebrate America's 250th birthday, which is coming in 2026. And as Director Arnone talked about the bicentennial, some of us weren't here at that time. You mayors. Here at the bicentennial, I remember wearing my Betsy Ross costume and parading around the neighborhood and all the excitement that went along with the bicentennial. And I can't believe it's almost 50 years later where we're getting ready to celebrate America's 250th birthday in 2026. For those of you who said it's called a semi-quintcentennial, but because that is such a very long word, the United States has decided to just call it American 250. And that is the term.
That's right.
You know, you have to practice it a lot, and I have, because I'm so excited about this. But our Board of Commissioners, actually, I believe it was last year, appointed a committee in the county to begin the planning and preparations for 2026. I know it seems like a long way off, but when it comes to planning a great celebration, you really have to start early. And one of the things that we're doing is working to engage our municipalities, 53 in Monmouth County, so that we can have, you know, the best celebration in the state of New Jersey. So here we are. You're the guinea pigs. We're here.
And we will, and we are gonna, we are gonna pick mayor against mayor who does the better celebration. So with that happening, believe me.
It's already, it's already in the bag.
I'm sure it's in the bag.
Not concerned.
But it's something that we're really gonna try to be unique, because we're so unique if you think about what our county is from here down to the shore, down to the western part of the county. We're so diverse and have, you know, different types of specialties that we can, you know, we can really showcase. And I think that's what's gonna make it so special, probably more unique than any other county. So we're really gonna, we're really gonna come together and actually just be like one big club for a period of time there, which I think, I think our country needs. We know that. But more importantly, it's gonna be really special for our county.
One of the very important things to go along with the celebration that we would like to do, and there's something to be said in every town, is really showcase Monmouth County's history and how important our part was in the American Revolution. And that's a big part of what we plan to do for 2026. So we formed a committee. We started working on things. We had a launch event. We hired an executive director, that's Ted, to handle the day-to-day. We have our social media up and running, Monmouth MJ250. We have a website where you can begin to find information. We have an email system where you can send out your emails, so we're really excited about that. And we produce a launch video, which we are gonna show you right now. It's a few minutes, but it talks a little bit about our history and what we plan to do.
Great.
The 250th anniversary of the founding of the United States of America is coming in 2026. America's semi-quintcentennial is celebrated all across our nation, our state, our county, and our communities.
In Monmouth County, we celebrate not only the birth of the great in the world, but the significant role our county has played in the fight for independence.
New Jersey is known as the crossroads of the nations of independence. The Battle It was the biggest and longest one-day battle of the Revolutionary War, with General Washington leading a Continental Army in the attack on the British. But Monmouth County Revolutionary War story is much more than that.
Stories of families and loyalties divided and individuals so different attempting to navigate on certain fronts. It's a story of the strife and skirmish over many years of the revolution that pitted neighbors against neighbors, friends against friends. Most loyal to the crown organizing for its counties more than in any other county in New Jersey.
At the time, Governor Wilson called Monmouth "the theater of spoil and destruction." Monmouth County was truly a battleground in the cause of freedom. And when the war had been won, the people of Monmouth County gradually transitioned over to the peaceful pursuits of agriculture, commerce, and industry.
In the almost 250 years since the signing and Declaration of Independence, Monmouth County has grown and flourished to be the ideal place to play. Monmouth County has everything: the most expensive parks in the open space, our breathtaking shoreline, our beautiful towns and bustling cities, fertile acres of cultivated farming, innovative industry and business.
Our county has grown to be the fifth most populous in the state, with over 600,000 residents. It's the best county in the state of New Jersey. And our people have made their mark on our national landscape: accomplished engineers, poets, and writers, innovative vendors, government leaders, renowned judges, famous athletes, sports heroes, entrepreneurs, activists, and so many more. 2026 may seem like quite a while, but we are excited to embark on the journey toward this momentous amendment.
Join us as we look back on the people, places, and events that carved Monmouth County's history over the past 250 years. Please honor 250's time. Monmouth County will be
about what we talked about, it's not just really celebrating was also focusing on our history to boost our economy, to bring tourists to the area. So it's really something that we wanna hit every aspect of life in Monmouth County and bring people here to see what we're all about. So we, in addition to the launch video, we developed the logo. We decided our slogan was going to be "Freedom's Fallow Ground", because we, that Monmouth County was just a place where there was constant fighting, constant strife, in order to get to that point where we became a nation of our own, the United States of America. So we formed a committee. We can kind of assess that, I think. We talked about our vision, creating celebrations, experiences for residents and visitors that they'll talk about for years to come, to honor and commemorate Monmouth County's rich history over the past 250 years and its significance to the American Revolution, and encourage all of our Monmouth County municipalities to adopt a resolution, which you did. Thank you so much. And to champion and get involved in the celebration. So our strategy about what we're going to do, we're engaging with our municipalities. We've already engaged all of our historical organizations around the county. We've met with them. We're meeting with the arts community, business organizations, Daughters of the American Revolution, Sons of the American Revolution, the Count Basie. We're reaching out to have a broad base to involve all different aspects of Monmouth County life and organizations here. So from the county level, we are working to plan our own county-sponsored events. They will include potentially a gala, a parade, you know, countdown events, educational programs we're looking to do. We're going to be doing oral history and videos and all kinds of things to enhance the celebration.
And adding concerts and other venues there. That's what we're ultimately trying to bring together in certain parts of the county, just to bring people together and have our logo out there so people can start to remember. And if we started early and we put little little events until we get to, obviously, in '26, people will start to recognize and know and be aware of what's going on and what we're gonna do as a true team. And we really are gonna engage. I know I spoke to the mayor and I know that Christine did too, also about putting in different regions, mayor's groups of different regions, like the Bay Shore mayors for here, for example, down to the shore, down to the Two Rivers, down to the western part of the county, all those different areas, and mayors bringing them together and for them to put their committees together. Because back in 1976, that's what towns did. They put committees together and they had parades, fairs, and different, you know, different things that today's innovative lifestyle that will probably be a little bit more enhanced than it was back then. But it still should be very fun. And also, you know, and we have the youth here today, and it's so important because I think, you know, back then, remembering it, not at their age, I was a little older than them, they're too, because they'll remember and they learn history as they got up there today. The way they, you guys, did the Pledge of Allegiance is fabulous. I actually might have you come to my room. That's, that's, that's what it's really, that's what we're supposed to do as adults.
So one of the things that I'm fortunate to have as the county clerk is oversight of the county archives. And I have a tremendous collection of records from the bicentennial in 1976. And we were able to pull all these records to see what every single town in Monmouth County did 50 years ago. And we pulled a little bit of Middletown's history here. You had a bicentennial parade on Route 35 on June 13th, 1976. You had a bicentennial car rally. And you marked the route of the British retreat following the Battle of Monmouth. I think Middletown did more than that, too, but these were just little snippets of what happened here 50 years ago.
Certainly will be for 250.
So I wanted you to be able to see that. And we're learning based on what was done 50 years ago. It's very educational to look through all the materials to see what every town did, what the county did, to guide us in our preparations. So when we go to the municipalities, we've just, some have asked us, even though we haven't been to any yet, they've emailed us to say like, "What can we do? Give us some ideas." So we've talked about the preservation of land as a birthday gift for America. Do a town oral history program. Mark your historic properties in town if you haven't done that already. Clean up. 50 years ago, they did clean up America. So that would be a very nice thing to do here in Monmouth County, is to clean up our communities, to make sure that we're preserving a beautiful community for future generations. Plan celebration events or take the 250 theme and apply it to events that you already have. But I am sure that Middletown is going to come up with their own ideas and be a great partner to the county in this celebration.
And what's working also for us is Christine and the committee and myself, what we're doing is trying to find ways that probably the municipalities will not be there. You know, for example, we're gonna be changing our signage throughout the county. There's really, really, really creative signing throughout all of the county that will pretty much go on after the celebration. And then, you know, we're working behind the scenes on some really nice monuments that will be really creative and really exciting when people drive past.
So just some things to think about as we wrap up in terms of action items. We would love it. And thank you for passing the resolution, supporting the semi-quintcentennial planning and celebration. But appointing a liaison, it could be a member of the governing body, it could be a historical association, someone who we can connect with so that we can coordinate, so we're not doing things on the same day. So officially appointing someone to be the liaison to the county committee. And then just, you know, start getting people interested. It's, I know it feels like a long way off, but it's really not. Not that far, but start to build awareness. And then one other special thing I'd like to do is a Town by Town book. My predecessor did this, I think it was about 25 years ago. And there was like a little write-up about every town in Monmouth County. I want to update that book, so I will be reaching out to the governing body to say, "Hey, give me your history, put it in this countywide book, and we're gonna update the Town by Town book from Monmouth County."
All right, any questions from the governing body? Do you have a question, bud?
Do you have a question?
Step right forward. Name and address. You can always tell who's parent, you know, who's kid that is, because the parent looks down the front. All right, well, first of all, Director and Clerk Hanlon, thank you so much for coming. As a member, as a board member of the Crossroads of the American Revolution myself, obviously, I've been heavily involved in conversations with that statewide board about the different preparations that are being made. And, you know, those preparations started last year for a lot of these, from that organization's perspective, raising money for their historic sites. So, you know, while it is, we're kind of looking at the end of 2023 here. It's, you know, 2026 will be here before you know it. And I'm sure there's no doubt in my mind that this governing body will be very involved in the planning of events and be heavily involved in the conversations about what we can do as Monmouth County's oldest municipality.
Thank you so much. Thank you for having us. And it's very special to start here. You know, Middletown is a large municipality, and it's a driving force of the success of the county. So it's very special to be here and start here. And that was our plan, our game plan, and it worked. It doesn't always work, our game plan, but in this case, it did. So we're looking forward to you guys being a big part of this full celebration.
Thank you. Thank you.
We should recognizing October 22nd, 2023 as Middletown Day in the town of Middletown. We have a proclamation recognizing November 11th, 2023. And a proclamation recognizing November 23rd as Native American Heritage Month in the town of Middletown. At this time, we have a presentation recognizing MSC, U8 Courage Red for winning the 2023 MOSA Championships. At this time, I'd like to invite the team to come forward.
Come on up, please. Right, right down here, right? All right. It's all for taking my picture. First of all, Courage Red, congratulations. 20-0 over the last two seasons, right? Wow, a lot to be proud of, right? And I know we were talking earlier, you know, the best thing that I just want to compliment you on all is how easy it looked for all of you to line up, because I have high school teams that look like they've never walked in a line before. But I just want to congratulate you all, you know. Oftentimes, we talk about teamwork in this building, because it takes a team to win 20 games, to dominate over the course of two seasons like that. It's not one individual on the field that's defending your goal but scoring the goals on the opposing squad, right? It takes a team. It takes a team effort. It takes individuals willing to know that success isn't built on one. It's built on everyone that's sharing that field, everybody that's on the sidelines, taking a rest, cheering the rest of the team on, coming in when ready, when needed, and being a part of a group that is willing to be the best. And then 20-0 Courage Red is the best over the last two seasons. So congratulations. So before I let your coach speak here and give you some inspirational words, the Township Committee and I have certificates for all of you. And it says this, "The Township of Middletown congratulates Middletown Soccer Club U8 Courage Red on winning the Fall 2022 and Spring 2023 Monmouth Ocean Soccer Association Championships. Congratulations on completing two back-to-back perfect seasons with an impressive record of 20 0-0." I always forget that there's 0-0 in soccer. "Remaining undefeated for an entire year, especially when competing in the premier bracket, is an amazing accomplishment with your team's 108 goals and only 11 against." 108. So both your bond on and off the field is super strong, and we thank you for representing Middletown like champions. Keep playing your hearts out and crushing it as a team. I was like, "We're getting, we're getting real." So before I, before we wrap up, I'll let Coach, if you want to. Wow, Coach, you're really cute. Wow, I didn't think I was gonna lose. So not only did they line up correctly, but the coach has a prepared speech. But I love it.
Well, here it goes. So it's what I say, I'm proud of you girls for the team that you've become. Since the first day that this team was born, which is about a year ago, I've seen all of you grow into better soccer players. You're all smart, loving, sassy, and goofy in your own way. I've never cheated this for any of you. I admire the bond and connection that you all have with Coach Jess. And I know means a lot to her. Even though Coach Jess is gonna be here today, I know she's proud to be with you girls and to share this journey with you. You all deserve this recognition, the award, not only because you've won most of the season, but for the fact that you girls work hard for it. You practice twice a week. You all do personal training on the side. You play multiple leagues and tournaments, and you always give it your all. You're all very fortunate to receive all the support you get from Jess, Eric, myself, and more importantly, your parents, because without your parents, none of this would be possible. My last note is that instead of just competing, it's more important to always continue to be humble, friendly, and respectful kids on and off the field, because those traits are more important than sports and anything else we'll pursue in the future. I adore all of you equally, and I couldn't be more proud of you. Here's to not a king, not a queen, or our favorite soccer team, Courage Red.
Well, Coach, wait, maybe go under there. Once again, Courage Red, congratulations. Really means a lot. And to have champions, to have unbelievable athletes, people dedicated to the team is what makes me so proud, the Township Committee so proud, and Middletown so proud of all that you do. So congratulations again. Tess is the goalie right here.
Oh, there we go.
You have a speech?
No, it's a little gesture from the team to you.
Oh. Oh, I'm so much. Oh, I love it. Thank you all very much. Oh, okay, all right. We got the trophy, too?
We got the picture.
Slide up the ass here. All right. Ready? Hang on, wait, wait for, wait for your parents and everybody to shake their hair on your, each smile. All right, Middletown, let's give it up for Courage Red one more time. All right, now that anybody wants to compete against that, you go right ahead. Oh, wow, we even had a trophy ceremony here. Wow, that's a first too. See you, Coach. Okay, Heidi, here we go.
Our next item on tonight's agenda, we have approval of minutes for September 18th, 2023, and October 5th, 2023 workshop meeting.
Motion to approve.
Committeeman Clark.
Yes.
Committeewoman Kratz.
Yes.
Committeeman Setimbrino.
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Hybel.
Yes.
Mayor Perry.
Yes.
Motion carries to approve minutes. At this time, we have public hearing on proposed ordinances. Our first ordinance, 2023-3391, an ordinance authorizing execution of quick claim deed, releasing revisionary rights, and amending and restating restrictive covenants upon Block 607, Lot 6, pursuant to settlement agreement between the township and the New Jersey Titans Hockey Club in consideration for $1.5 million.
Any member of the public wishing to make a public comment on public ordinance number 2023-3391? Don, come on down.
Good evening, my name's Don Watson. Can you hear me now?
Yes, Don, we can hear you.
Okay, name's Don Watson, living at 1 Collinson Drive. You know, I read through this ordinance a little bit, and I'm a little confused. Could you explain this in residential terms about?
In what kind of terms?
Residential. People that live in town can understand it. I had a little trouble understanding it.
So, I mean, Brian, if you, I mean, you can or I can, Tony?
From a, from a legal perspective, I'll let you do it. Go ahead. So, so with this order, so this, by way of background, so in 2012, the township, as you recall, sold what was then just the swim club and nothing else.
Right.
The, that was purchased by the Middletown Titans, which is a nonprofit corporation that built the hockey rink on the site.
Are they still nonprofit?
Yes.
Okay.
But some of the, but what, and the genesis of this I'm getting to, is that at a point in time, we evaluated that status, and the organization's still nonprofit, but some of the uses they started doing on the property, we considered not to be exempt uses. So we started charging them property taxes on.
Okay.
Because of those, what we determined, our tax assessor determined to be non-exempt uses. That, us starting that process triggered about five years of litigation and tax appeals that we went into a significant back and forth with them on for a number of years.
I'm sure.
We worked out as, and there were, you know, questions over some of the specific language in the deed of conveyance from 2012, you know, what uses were permitted, not permitted, and so forth and so on. Without getting into like, trying to keep it in, as you'd say, layman's terms.
Yeah, you're doing a good job.
So, so the, so the, because it is, it's convoluted. So, so, you know, the township had, you know, at one point got to the point where we were going to seek to exercise reversionary interests. But this gets complicated, because now there's, you know, millions of dollars of debt on the property, and the bank's involved too now, because they financed the construction of the hockey rink. So you have a multitude of parties involved now. And so, in, as a result of this litigation and trying to resolve it and put it to bed once and for all, we decided that we were able to, we were able to get a pretty good, a pretty good deal whereby we kept all the tax money that we collected from them during that time, which was a number of years of tax revenue that was collected, that otherwise, if they were able to win on the appeals, we would have to refund them for all those years. And then one of the issues that.
All of the taxes, not just the.
Right.
Yeah, all of them, yeah, everything, not just the 20%.
Meaning for members of the public, meaning schools, 65%, counties, library, everybody.
Yeah. So, so the, you know, so that would be, so you know, it's a significant potential liability. We don't know necessarily where, but it's a significant potential liability. And then the issue came up over the reversionary interests that have been in place all this time. So we were able to negotiate a, a buyout of the reverse township's reversionary interests that we retained in the property. That's actually even in excess of, you know, what, what we sold the property for initially. So they're paying, so they're paying out over a 10-year period, a million and a half dollars to the township to buy out our reversionary interests that will have been in place for 20 years at that point. And that would fully, you know, that fully settles. So this would amend the deed to allow them to buy out the reversionary interest after 10 years. It will exist for another decade. So they can't divert the use to anything else. The reality is that they finance the hockey rink on there probably for 30 years, or 20, or maybe 25 years left or something. So that's, you know, not going anywhere realistically. And so they'll still be subject to those interests for, for another 10 years, we'll, you know, and, and they're, you know, they're basically paying us again to buy out the interest that we held in the property, is essentially what it comes down to. And settlement, and that also settles five years of tax appeals.
Plus property, plus they will now be obviously subject to property taxes.
Yeah, yeah. So they're going to be still subject to property tax too, and a portion of the property that's a non-exempt use too, as well. So resolve the back appeals, potential going forward, a few years on the non-exempt uses on the property, as well as buying out the township's remaining interests in the property over a 10-year period.
Cool. Very good. I appreciate that. All right.
That's all we got. Thank you. Thanks, Don. Any other member of the public wishing to make a public comment on public ordinance number 2023-3391? Seeing no other member of the public stepping forward, move to close the public portion and approve.
I would like to second that one.
Committeeman Clark.
Yes.
Committeewoman Kratz.
Yes.
Committeeman Setimbrino.
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Hybel.
Yes.
Mayor Perry.
Yes.
Motion carries to pass this ordinance on second and final reading. At this time, we have ordinance 2023-3392, an ordinance authorizing entry into lease, sublease agreement with the county of Monmouth and Port of Belford Solar Farm LLC, the designated subre developer of a portion of Block 306, Lot 66, within the Port of Belford redevelopment plan area.
Any member of the public wishing to make a public comment on ordinance number 2023-3392?
She has to come to the podium and, and, yes.
That's okay. Just, you, you want to speak on the, on the lease? Hold, hold on, just come to the microphone, state your name and address. Yes, come, come to, come to the microphone. Your name and address.
Good evening, Susan De Nocenzo, 398 Maple Drive in Belford. Middletown has to slow down. You got a lot of stuff going on. The land, preserve it. There's a lot more than just hearing the solar panel. People think it's like a fix-all. There's a lot of details involved in what the effects are going to be if that happens. I'm asking you, on behalf of Belford residents, there's a few other ones in here, take it easy for a while. Get what has to be done, done first. Keep it coastal, not commercial. Look into the effects that each panel, how many panels are going to be in that solar farm? There are 85,000 solar panels in Tinton Falls. 85,000. And that's on, I don't recall the number of acres. Enough is enough. Please. If you want, maybe, not 42 acres, try it. The heat from those, there's a lot of other factors that come into play with building a solar farm. It floods already. Seal up the ground. You're going to.
It's, it's a, it's an old garbage dump.
Also that wildlife. It's also a really pretty, I mean, judge the place up, sure, for lack of a better term. Judge it up? Sure. Sure.
Yeah, this, this is the county's property.
I know, but they want to get it from you to lease it, correct?
No, no, the, the town is just, is, is assisting in the, in their.
So is this already, so let me ask you this. Has it already been approved by the county?
Yeah.
Well, please speak on behalf of the Middletown residents and make a mark of, like, take it somewhere else.
There will be an application at the planning board for this, and you'll, everyone within 200 feet of their property will get notified. So there'll be a hearing.
You do know, there's a certain amount of miles that they can't be near a residential home, right? There's, there's a lot of heat that comes from that. There are people that live in that area.
Why they have a site plan application hearing to talk about all the details.
You're careful. I think Middletown, Middletown has to redevelop what it already has. We have lines on the ground that kids are crossing to go to school that are faded. We have, if you come down Church Street from St. Mary's, you can't even drive on the right side of the road, because the road is, there's other things that need to be done in Middletown before we keep, I think you're, you're all respectfully, so you're going a little too fast. Slow down with all these ideas. This is stunning. Enjoy this for a while. The other development across from Target, okay, that's in. Now we have the proposed, the new developer coming in for 1,000 units by the circus.
You mean that we're eminent domaining to prevent that from happening?
Well, I hope, I hope, because, you know, sometimes a lot of things are said, and then a lot of things go through anyway.
At our last meeting or a meeting before, that was all discussed.
I just, I just want to be heard, and I appreciate all of you.
Just so you know, this is, I mean, I appreciate your comments. This has been discussed since like 2017, I think.
Okay, well, it's, I'm not on social media, so fortunately, thank goodness, I did, I did get a little pop-up thing. I got a pop-up from the patch. And so I just, you know, try and slow down a little bit with the redevelopment. There's a lot of development existing that needs a little jujant.
That's what redevelopment is.
Not really.
Redeveloping, it's jujing the.
No, not, not the, not the crosswalks, not the lines, not the, you know, coming down from Tyndale Road. You have a split in there. There's, there's no lines for the, for the new drivers coming out of the high school to see where that road splits. The crosswalks need to be redone. I mean, there's a lot of other things that have to be done before we start solar paneling.
Yeah, I mean, again, as, as Mr. Nelson stated, this, this is just, this is county's, the county's property.
Okay.
So, so, you know, if you'd like, you can, you know, happy to get you the.
So what is the connection between you and the county, and why is it brought up at a, at a meeting?
So, we're just really a pass-through for the county on this, because we're the redevelopment entity. So the county doesn't have the same redevelopment powers the municipality has. So we're just a pass-through on the lease of the county. It's, the county owns the property. It's a former closed landfill site that can't be used really for anything else, other than something like this. So they can do it with or without the township. The benefit that the township derives from it is tax revenue principally, because right now, it's not exempt property owned by the county. But when there's a non-exempt use put onto it by a private developer, would be the solar developer, then that property becomes taxable to the township. But otherwise, it's the county's property. They could do it without the township if they wanted to.
So why was it just popping up on, on a Middletown patch?
I can't tell when the Middletown patch decides to write stories and not.
You know, I'm not going to, but I'm grateful, because I really, you, there's no way you can step in between and say.
Well, either we do.
You know, in honor of the 250th birthday of our country, you know what, we, we don't want, you know, the panels. Can you do that? That was number one on one of those slides, preserve land.
Okay.
Yeah. Something better could be done with that. We don't need, you know, 42 acres, 42 acres of solar panel.
Just so you understand, that's out of 350 acres. It's a huge, huge property. They were only taking, using a portion of their property.
Have you ever been to a solar farm?
Yeah.
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 Have you ever touched one?
I have no reason to touch one.
I would probably, I just, I just want to be clear. I don't think anyone should be touching solar.
No, but I'm saying, well, my.
As a PSA, I, I think that that is a bad idea.
My idea was, there's, there's a tremendous amount of heat, and, and.
I, I fully appreciate and understand and respect your.
I hope you do.
Opinion. I sincerely do. I would encourage you to direct your comments to the county commissioners, which I'm, I'm happy to.
I'm sorry to interrupt. Why did this come up for a discussion at a Middletown?
Because the township can either be a part of this and receive property taxes on this non-exempt use, as Mr. Nelson had stated, or they can just go ahead and do it without us. So.
So you don't want to pay taxes on the property?
No, we want.
We're not paying, no one's paying property taxes. The county, the county government is exempt from paying property taxes to the township. Under this, the.
Like, is there any kind of financial agreement between the township? It is your, you know.
It is not our land. It is owned by the county of Monmouth. That's okay. It is owned by the county of Monmouth, which makes them tax exempt to the township. Okay.
So you have no play, and you have no say in what, like, it's gonna happen. Am I correct?
The only thing that we have the authority to do is vote on this ordinance here, which would either allow us to be part of this, or the county can go and do.
Thank you. It'll be interesting.
Okay.
Yeah.
Any other member of the public? Yeah. Okay. Yes. Bless you.
Hello.
You don't have to be sorry, Janet.
Tower Fleming 49, Randy Winway. Hello.
How are you?
Um, good. How are you?
Good.
I was just curious, what is the purpose of this, like, what will, where would that power go to? Like, what will it be used for? That's all.
Straight, straight to the grid.
All right, so just extra, like, for the.
Well, I mean, what, what everyone, I think, has to realize, and the things that I've been working on, is there's all this talk about adding electric vehicles by X state, which, not getting into the weeds of that, there's all these, you know, Tes, you see more and more Teslas on the road, you're seeing more and more electric vehicles come onto the road, given the incentives that these companies get to create them. Just that alone, the head, I believe, what was it, the Federal Energy Commission, or was the DEP, the Secretary of Environmental Protection, was asked at a congressional hearing, do you currently, does the grid currently have enough power to power the vehicles that are anticipated on the road just this year, along with the houses and everything else that is now being electrified? And the answer is no.
Right.
The answer is no. So, listen, JCPN L doesn't get the calls that my office gets when the power goes out. Even though they're the ones that deliver the power.
Right.
They're not the one. If we don't start looking, you know, I'm all up for diversification if it's going to actually work. So, under this program, under this, this ordinance, you are now going to be able to harness energy that you did not have.
I'm not against it. I was just, I was just curious.
Yeah, goes right back into the system.
Would help us out, you know, as a township, to have this extra backup, or whatever it was. I just wanted to, thank you.
No worries. Any other member of the public wishing to make a public comment? All right, seeing no other member of the public stepping forward, move to close the public portion and approve.
Second.
Committeeman Clark.
Yes.
Committeewoman Kratz.
Yes.
Committeeman Setimbrino.
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Hybel.
Yes.
Mayor Perry.
Yes.
Motion carries to pass this ordinance on second and final reading. Our next ordinance on the agenda is 2023-3393, an ordinance authorizing special emergency.
Any member of the public wishing to make a public comment on public ordinance number Seeing no other member of the public stepping forward, move to close the public portion and approve.
Second.
Committeeman Clark.
Yes.
Committeewoman Kratz.
Yes.
Committeeman Setimbrino.
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Hybel.
Yes.
Mayor Perry.
Yes.
Motion carries to pass this ordinance on second and final reading. This time, we have ordinance 2023-3394, an ordinance authorizing the vacation of a portion of Garrett Hill Boulevard within the township of Middletown, Monmouth County, New Jersey.
Any member of the public wishing to make a public comment on ordinance number 2023-3394? Yes, sir. Come right down, just state your name and address for the record for me, please. How you doing today?
Good.
Good.
Vincent Ferrara.
Vincent Ferrara, 41 North Fox Avenue. So I'm adjacent to that block.
Mm-hmm.
Can you explain a little further of what's gonna happen?
Tone, do you want to go through that?
Yeah, just pull up the map.
Yeah, are we able to bring that up? Tone?
Um, joking, if you want to go to, um,
I just, if, if, if you're okay with it, I would just rather bring it up so everybody understands what we're talking about.
Right now, go to the back end.
Perfect. Now I can get to know what Joe's password to go pilot is. Oh, man.
What was your address?
Excuse me?
Your address?
Uh, 481 North Fox Avenue.
41 North Fox. North Fox.
F O X. Yeah. Just type in 41. Let it come up with, and then just start, there you go, North Fox, right there.
So that's, that's your house right there?
That's correct.
I can zoom out a little bit. So basically what it means is the, the very end of Garrett Hill, it just means that the, the property owner here is being added to their property. I believe this is Earl here. So usually when you vacate a street, you split it down the middle and half goes to one owner and half goes to the other. But Earl, we always ask both property owners because sometimes some people don't want it and Earl weren't interested in it. So the property goes all through, um, that property owner. Because it's never going to get built. It's never ever going to be a real road because, because the naval station's there. So we have these streets all over town. They're called paper streets. And if they're never, ever likely to be built, and if there's no utilities in them and things like that, we, at the request of an adjoining property, we'll vacate them. So it, it adds on to their property.
Oh, that's.
But like I said, most of the time it's split 50/50. In this case, it's all going to one because the other owner didn't want it.
Very good.
It, it ha, it happens quite often.
Yeah, I under, I misunderstood the vacation. I, I wasn't sure of what was going on.
Yeah.
So, yeah, you clarified.
This becomes like, like Mr. Mercantante said.
Yeah.
It just becomes the property owners.
To most cases, it doesn't result in the property owner being able to build more, uh, you know, but this, in this case, he's fairly close to his one property line. So now, you know, we'll have just extra space. It's not like you're going to get another house there or anything like that. There's not enough room for that.
Very good. Thank you.
All right. Thank you, sir. Any other member of the public wishing to speak on public ordinance number three, three, nine, four? Seeing no other member of the public stepping forward, move to close the public portion and approve.
Second.
Committeeman Clark.
Yes.
Committeewoman Kratz.
Yes.
Committeeman Sedambrino.
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Hybeau.
Yes.
Mayor Perry.
Yes.
Motion carries to pass this ordinance on a second and final reading. Next we have ordinance 2023 dash three, three, nine, five, an ordinance amending chapter 240 dash 25 of the code of the township of Middletown governing recreation permitting and fees.
Any member of the public wishing to speak on public ordinance number 2023 dash three, three, nine, five? Seeing no member of the public stepping forward, move to close the public portion and approve.
Second.
Committeeman Clark.
Yes.
Committeewoman Kratz.
Yes.
Committeeman Sedambrino.
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Hybeau.
Yes.
Mayor Perry.
Yes.
Motion carries to pass this ordinance on second and final reading. Um, at this time we have introduction of proposed ordinance, uh, 2023 dash three, three, nine, six, an ordinance adopting the River Centra, uh, South redevelopment plan for block 1131 lots 31, 30, 31 and 32 within the exit 109 redevelopment plan area.
Motion introduced.
Second.
Committeeman Clark.
Yes.
Committeewoman Kratz.
Yes.
Committeeman Sedambrino.
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Hybeau.
Yes.
Mayor Perry.
Yes.
Motion carries to pass this ordinance on first reading with a public hearing to be held at our regular meeting in November.
On November.
November 20th. Our next, uh, item on tonight's agenda, we have consent agenda, which would include resolutions 23 dash 257 through 23, uh, dash, uh, 23 dash 267, which is the payment of bills and a firefighter application.
Motion to approve the consent agenda.
Second.
Um, Committeeman Clark.
Yes.
Committeewoman Kratz.
Yes.
Committeeman Sedambrino.
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Hybeau.
Yes.
Mayor Perry.
Yes.
Motion carries to adopt consent agenda. This time we have township committee comments.
All right, Committeeman Clark? I'll make it a brief, um, first, uh, it was probably the most, uh, the most fun pledge of allegiance in my three years, uh, being on the committee. Uh, there's something about, and I have an eight-year-old at home and I have a 13-year-old at home. There's something about, uh, hearing the enthusiasm of a child, um, saying our pledge of allegiance and, and when they truly mean it and feel it, the whole room felt it. And I, that was pretty cool. Um, to the, um, to the woman who was here asking about the solar panels and asking us to slow down. Um, something I take pride in sitting up here is being very concerned about how our town, um, is perceived, not just by the public, but by myself. I, I was born and raised in Middletown. I've seen this town grow and, um, I'm proud of the decisions that we've made in the last three years that I've been on the board, on the, on this committee to help shape the future of the town for my kids. Um, they're not easy decisions, but they're decisions that are made in the best interest of our municipality moving forward. And I think what she might have been missing in the whole conversation, and I hope that everybody else in the room got it, was we could have either been a part of that program and the town could have collected some money towards it or towards other things like repainting our streets and, uh, repaving our streets and otherwise, or we could have been left out completely. And again, they're not the easiest decisions, but they're decisions that we have to make in way every single day. Um, and this is one of the days that I'm proud to be part of this committee because we do have, we do get to show that we do think about things and, um, uh, I'm just proud of that. So with that, I'm done, Mr. Mayor. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Uh, two items. Just, uh, the first one is I'm going to make a motion that we begin all our township committee meetings with the cheer of purge red.
Let's do it.
Second.
There you go. I think that'd be a great way to start the meeting, but, uh,
I love.
But, um, Middletown is continued to be, continues to be represented by, uh, younger and younger members, and it's just, uh, just fantastic to see and to hear. Uh, and the only other item, uh, Mayor, is that, uh, I think this Sunday, uh, after two potentially, two rescheduled times, we're looking at Middletown Day. So we're, we're looking forward to it. Uh, it looks like a great day and, uh, we'll hope to see everyone there. Thank you, Mayor.
Uh, yes, thank you. Uh, I, well, I think we've passed how many, uh, resolutions now designating a day as Middletown Day in town? Uh, three, three times?
We're, we're paying for a lot of years of good luck.
Yeah, yeah. You know what? I, I believe Merk though, because you were the one that said, we always get great weather on Middletown Day. He must've said that to me three times. Um, but, uh, thank you, Committeeman Sedambrino. Uh, Committeewoman Kratz.
Thank you, Mayor. I will just echo the sentiments of, of the rest of everyone here that, um, it was awesome. I, I wasn't looking at them clearly. I was looking at the flag and doing the pledge. And when you heard them echo that, it was just fabulous. You've heard, you felt it. There's such, so with so much pride. So it really something special. And I agree, I would like to harness it and keep that energy for every meeting, for sure. We could. That would be fabulous, right?
Are you, are you good with that motion then, Committeewoman?
Absolutely, absolutely. So also just wanted to give a quick shout out to, to Belford Engine. Deputy Mayor Hybeau and I had the honor of, um, attending their car show and it was, it was really quite something. And, uh, Deputy Hybeau absolutely picked a winner. So it was a, a good pick for sure. I'm sure he'll talk to you about that too. And, um, just a reminder.
They let the deputy mayor make the mayor's pick for the, okay.
He had a good pick.
Oh, yeah.
Oh, Deputy Mayor, I'll help you. It was a 55 Chevy Impala.
Oh, okay.
Yes, it was quite, it was beautiful, actually. It was good. It was a great event. So successful event for the, uh, fire department. So awesome stuff. And then, uh, just a reminder, the food drive, um, the information for Thanksgiving is on the website. So if anyone, um, takes a look at that or social media too, um, middletownnj.org, um, to help Middletown residents over Thanksgiving. There's, um, exact items that, you know, everyone's looking for to, to put together a good Thanksgiving for our neighbors. So I appreciate the help for that also. And the times and, and locations and, and all of that details are, are on the website. So thanks so much.
All right. Thank you. Uh, Deputy Mayor, uh, I just want to say, uh, we got Middletown Day for the third time, right, Janet? Uh, you're here to tell us tonight that it's not going to rain, right?
Yes.
Yes. Okay. This weekend we got Middletown Day, so hope to see everyone there. And that's all I have, Mayor. All right. Thank you very much. Um, so, uh, yes, I hope to see everybody at Middletown Day. Um, the one thing that I, I do want to say, I, I do it at this meeting every single year. This is the final meeting before Election Day. Um, so I do just want to let everybody know November 7th is Election Day. Um, you still have time to file for your vote by mail ballot. You still have the opportunity to go in early vote, which begins on October 28th to November 5th at Croydon Hall. Um, you know, please go out and, and exercise your right to vote. I know it's a low turnout election year, um, but I hope everybody here and everybody across town, um, utilizes and, and exercises their, their civil right to go out and cast their vote for somebody that they believe in, people that they share a vision, not just for Middletown, New Jersey, but, but for our country. Um, we need strong leadership and, uh, I hope all of you will exercise that vote, um, in whatever manner you now have to do it, whether that's V B M or early voting, or if you go to the polls on Election Day. Uh, I, I know I'll see you out there. Um, so I encourage all of you to go out and exercise that vote. Um, so with that, I'll open it up for pub, public comment. Any member of the public wishing to make a public comment may do so. We ask that you state your name and address for the record and that you keep your comments to five minutes. At four minutes, I'll let you know that you have one minute remaining. Um, any member of the public wishing to make a, yes, ma'am. Just come right here to the microphone.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Susan Penrose, 12 Clavenden Court, and that's in King's Landing. I'm the president of the condo association. And I'm here to ask the township to consider paving King's Landing Road. We have got potholes that you have repaired for us, which we appreciate, but at this point, the potholes are getting pretty bad. And I've lived there since 95 and I don't think it's ever really been totally repaved. And since Toll Brothers went in across the street, you did a nice job of paving our entrance after they put in all of the, uh, the sewers and all of that. And that's great. But the rest of King's Landing Road really needs to be repaired. So I'm just asking if the town would consider looking into that.
I'll take a look at it myself and drive out there and we'll take a look at it with our engineering team.
Appreciate that. My second question is right at the corner of King's Highway East and 35. There's a lot of, there's cones there and it looks like there's been ground cleared. What's going on there?
That's the state DOT. Um, they're just dredging the, um, the creek.
The creek that's there? Okay.
Yeah, they're just dredging that. They're trying to clean out the pipe that goes under the highway.
So it doesn't flood there?
That's why they're also in the middle where the garden center used to be. They're dredging, they're going in there and then on the other side right there.
Okay. I just want to make sure there was no more construction going on.
No, no, no.
We have enough problems on that road right now. But anyway, thank you very much.
You're welcome. YouTube, thank you so much. Any other member of the public?
How you doing, Mayor? John Halloway, 164 Oaks Avenue. Uh, I just recently moved back home, uh, with my dad and my family. And, uh, a little disturbing news earlier during the week, we received notice that we have a registered through, uh, stage three sex offender in the neighborhood, tier three sex offender neighborhood. Um, me having two girls of my own of this, around that age of his, uh, victims, you know, we have baby school right up the street. We have kinder care right around the corner. I think actually we even have a crossing guard at the top of Bayview and Luterville that crosses kids down this street. Um, kudos to the Middletown Police Department for everything they did by notifying everybody. We have no problems with that whatsoever. Um, my issue is how can this happen by him living there and so close to these people, so close to a school, so close to a kinder care? And what can we do with anything?
So John, I have been thinking about this since I got a call from Chief Weber, letting me know that this was, um, imminent. And I had the chief send me a copy of this individual's, um, record. Mm-hmm. And when I looked at it and noticed that this person not only destroyed the lives of two children, um, I don't even know if you can count the number of children's lives that have been destroyed by what was found on his computer. Correct. And sometimes it helps to take yourself when you're the mayor or an elected official, it's good for your, you to take yourself out of the equation when you're making a decision. Because you have to make a decision, um, in every aspect, what's best for the town and not what is best for you or section of town. But having two girls myself, there isn't a thing I wouldn't do to protect them from a sick, twisted, demented person who could ruin, who could destroy the lives of two little girls. I wish I had an answer that I could tell you where I could force this individual to move out of the neighborhood. But I don't have that authority. We don't have that authority. But there is certainly one thing that I will tell you is that anyone who is convicted of such disgusting behavior in no way, shape or form deserves any type of protections because they own or live at a house within eyesight of a school. Right. If we want to protect children, then we have to do it everywhere and all the time. Right. And anyone that wants to tell me that the rights of those children and the rights of those parents of those children deserve less respect than someone who took the future potentially of these two girls. There isn't a day that you're ever going to convince me of that. Agreed. And I would rather spend the rest of my days in hell than know that this person injured or hurt another boy, girl, child. Right. Individual person, adult, senior. It's disgusting. It's sick. And I can only hope that every single person picked up their phone when they got that notification from the, from the police and dialed up their legislators, dialed up Declan and said, you better drop a bill in the, in the New Jersey legislature tomorrow, making this illegal. It may not change what is happening today, but oftentimes the, the decisions that we make up here aren't for today. They're for tomorrow. So let's make sure this never happens again. I, I wouldn't want to do it. I wouldn't want to sit there and know that I have this predator down the street within eyesight of my school. I would be looking at that house every single day, wondering when you're coming out there to take a look at a kid, peeking out your window to take a look at a kid sitting there. It, it makes me sick. And I hope that every single person in that neighborhood knows the number to call. 609-292-6000. Dial that phone number and lodge your complaint and say that Middletown is not for people who have ruined the lives of little girls. That makes me just absolutely sick. 609-292-6000. All right. Thank you very much. Appreciate it. Any other member of the public wishing to make a public comment? Don, come on down. Don, come on down.
Good evening, my name's Don Watson, living at one Collinson Drive. Um, we've...
I didn't know that, Don.
You didn't? Want me to write it down for you?
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Okay.
Go ahead, Don.
All right, um, we were talking earlier about the food drive, I think Tim brought that up? Yeah. Um, why isn't Middletown Helps Its Own collecting food this year?
They are, it's in addition, so it's the township, it's for, through social services.
So the food that you're collecting, is that going towards the distribution that Middletown Helps Its Own?
It goes to, it goes within the social services department, and they disperse accordingly.
Also, it's something separate than what Middletown Helps Its Own does?
Middletown and Middletown Helps Its Own has always worked closely together, and they'll continue to do so.
Right.
So, for sure, always been a partner.
That, this is, uh, it goes along with the partnership that we have to get the, um, free and reduced lunches at the schools.
Mm-hmm.
Um, those families are, we have that listing, obviously, and work to get them the, um, supplies that they need ahead of Thanksgiving.
Right. All right, cool.
Yeah, what, what tends to happen too, is if we, in some years, we've gotten more donations than we can even distribute.
Mm-hmm.
We do, we give those to...
I see, and that goes towards the Thanksgiving and Christmas distributions.
Yes.
Okay, I was just curious, because I, you know, many times I don't, um, volunteer to help distribute stuff through Middletown Helps Its Own, and you know, I kept seeing announcements that they're not collecting food, and I was curious as to why.
You mean the township?
No, Middletown Helps Its Own.
Oh, um, I don't...
There's...
I, I think they still are, I know they had an issue where they, they were just literally chock-full of stuff, so...
Maybe that's why.
Down a little bit, but I think they are still continuing to collect food and, and distribute it.
The, the town that, uh, we weren't collecting food, um, because we were a little bit short-staffed when it came to accepting those goods, um, and, and also at the same time, had an abundance of, of food. So, you know, we wanted to ensure that we were getting that out on a timely basis, and, but you also have to work within the confines and storage that you have.
Yeah, right.
Yeah.
Yep. Born of the poorest of the poor.
Yeah.
They have a facility on Kane's Lane, right?
Yes, they do.
Okay. You guys work with them too, right?
I've toured the facility, amazing, amazing people.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay, um, I noticed that there was a, um, police blotter published.
You were on it, or I was?
I wasn't on this one.
Okay.
Maybe a few before then. Way to see that. Um, how many police, um, officers do we have?
I think one twenty... Uniform police officers, a hundred and fourteen.
Yeah, patrolmen.
Patrolmen, uh... Around eighty, eighty-two.
Yeah.
Okay. And they go on four thousand calls a month? That's what was published in the police blotter for September.
They don't edit it, so, uh, I don't have it sitting in front of me, but I would assume that that's true.
They get multiple calls every day, so four thousand a month sounds...
Yeah.
Yes, thousand a week.
Yeah.
So a hundred, say a hundred police officers are on patrol.
Um...
We got three shifts?
Three shifts.
Three shifts, they're not all on full-time.
Yeah, there's like forty on, on patrol, maybe?
It depends, it depends, uh, it depends on the type of shift, but, uh, they're going to be anywhere from ten to thirty-five.
Okay. Um, also, I was wondering why we don't publish this every month? You know, it's very sporadic on when I see it published. I know we did it in August, and we did it in September, but, you know, I didn't see nothing for June or July, or...
The plan at the police department is just, they've had some, some turnover in their, you know, superior officer, but I think their plan is to do the monthly.
Yeah. Okay, I was hoping so. Now, um, it says of the four thousand calls for service, it says including three hundred and sixty-five EMS, twenty-two fire calls, is that all part of the four thousand?
Yes.
So it's all inclusive?
Mm-hmm.
All right, I just wanted to make sure I was reading that correctly.
As all of the chiefs and firefighters in the room, because we have several of them, um, the, you know, Dan, Chief Kelly, Chief Hybel, Chief Clark, Chief Hybel over here, um, you know, we, there's, there's going to be police needed, and they're going to respond to, to calls for EMS or fire.
I was just wondering if these were all inclusive, or in addition to...
They, they just want to make it clear that, like, for example, virtually every EMS call, nine-one-one calls for EMS...
As a patrolman.
Always the first ones to show up, because they're already on the road, right?
Yeah.
They're just saying that we, we show up, there's not necessarily a crime going on, so we didn't do any police work per se, but we were, we were there.
Right.
In addition, we have all these other calls where there is a potential crime.
Mm-hmm. Yeah, right. Is it still true that we have a patrolman within two minutes anywhere in the township?
Yeah. The way that the town is divided up, I would, the way that they divide up the town, I'd probably say that that's...
Close to it.
True, I mean, two to three minutes.
Yeah, we used to, we used to advertise that.
Yeah.
That definitely is realistic, the only thing that impacts that is there are multiple calls at the same time, which...
Yeah, right. Yeah, but you can only be in one place.
It might take them four, four minutes to get there.
Only be at one place at a time. All right, um, I cleared up a lot of stuff that I had floating around up here, now I got some room for the moths.
Okay.
Thank you very much.
You got it. Any other member of the public wishing to make a public statement? Seeing no other member of the public stepping forward, move to close the public portion and adjourn.
Second.
Committeeman Clark.
Yes.
Committeewoman Kratz.
Yes.
Committeeman Sedambrino.
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Hybel.
Yes.
Mayor Perry.
Yes.
Motion carries to adjourn.
Have a great night, everybody, thank you all.